This is the Review and Discuss the Condition Assessment Report provided by CUNY Architects. I think I'll turn it over to Rebecca and to Fitz and John, probably here.
I'm gonna turn it right over to John.
Figured you would. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm John Urban, General Services Manager. My cohort is Mike Blank, he's our Facilities Project Coordinator, John Wollencamp from CUNY Architects. We're here to present an update to the Facility Condition Assessment Report that was done back in 21. I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at it, but that report was an in-house product that we did, working with all the various departments. Kind of, it was the first time we did a comprehensive review on where our city building stock was in terms of looking at the CIP as a budget planning tool for long-term and short-term renovation, replacement, that sort of thing. That was in 21. As the council may be aware, we've put a lot of placeholders into CIP for facility condition updates and replacements down the road, and it was, felt that it was prudent to probably do another update to that, a follow-up to that report, maybe a little more effort put in on some more and more of the details. So, the city engaged John Wollencamp from CUNY Architects last year to conduct this report, go through, I think it's 31 different facilities that he reviewed, him and his team. They did tours and interviews and looked at all the various reports that other facilities have done over the years and have continued to do, and kind of provide us an update as to where we are now, and again, help us look towards the future in terms of what we need to be thinking about for facility replacement renovations. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to John and have him kind of do a little summary of the report.
Great, good evening. The first few slides is pretty much just a written piece of kind of summarizing the report, and more importantly, they're here in case you have questions or things that you want me to better explain as you're going through the report. In summary, I can tell you, as John mentioned, it's really 30 facilities, 31, one we didn't look at because the station, Fire Station 14 is coming, but I'll get into that. But I can tell you, overall, we use the 2021 report as a boilerplate and pretty much use that same concept through for continuity. In summary, all my years of doing this, the city of Oshkosh, I feel, is sitting very well with facilities and how the facilities are in condition, and really, that hats off to the staff that works in the community, the council members that really care and show that you spend time and money and kept up on the facilities. As we go through the report, you'll see there's different aspects. We kind of summarized all the, each facility high level, then we did a dive into all the different mechanicals, ADA, and kind of addressed it that way. A lot of it is just documented also in photographs, which just helps you visually see things that, when we say things, you can kind of see the level of severity to it. It might just sound scary, high level, but looking at a picture, you can say, oh, we're A lot of facilities have had prior reports, which made this report seamless to do and also showed that we had another backdrop to bounce things off and to make sure. So those other reports were done by all different firms, whether it was from wastewater treatment to transportation, they all had different reports done by different firms, in addition to the city does in-depth asphalt and roofing reports assessments, that we were able to kind of track and go back and look at and see how things were being kept up on. The assessments, I mentioned a lot with staff notes in the 2021 report, and a lot of fields observation. So what I did is I kind of went through every facility high level, sat with the different directors, and then pretty much just went out on my own to kind of look at the assessments, so I would really get a non-biased opinion of the facilities. That then was just given to the individual groups for review, and they were able to correct me on things that might have been done that I missed, or kind of highlight things that they need to know, that they have to address. The ranking system, and I'll get into the chart, this is showing 1 through 5, and I apologize, it's actually reversed. When you see the chart, new is actually 1, 5 is critical. So when we get into the report, you see, so we created a ranking scoring system, and when I get to that chart, I'll kind of highlight, because then on top of that ranking system, we have priority and a scale factor that goes into each one of those columns. In summary, the Sawyer Storage Joint Public Safety Training Facility on Sawyer Street ranked the highest score. The highest score doesn't mean good. The highest score means that's the one that needs the most attention, and then in line with, and that was 128 points, the minimum points is 31, and then the City Hall at 95, the Transportation Main Facility, 79, and that's the main transportation facility, not the one on Pearl, and then Water Distribution, and then the Public Museum. Here's the list of, oh, sorry, I'm flicking my machine and I'm changing, sorry. Here's the list of 1 through 30 in alphabetical order. So these are not in any order except alphabetical order. You can kind of see all the facilities. The one facility, as I mentioned, that's not listed on here is Station 15, 14. The city occupies the building, but is a county-owned facility, and there's other conversations that need to go on about that facility and what happens with that facility there. Just a roadmap, kind of showing where the facilities are throughout the city. High level, here's the scoring sheet on your left. If you look in the upper-left, the colors from 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, as the 5 being the new, down to 1 being the critical. And then in addition to that, in each column, as you go past 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, there's a factor of 1 through 5 that gives you the importance factor. So if you have a column that, bless you, for example, a 2, it's pretty low priority. So as you go, you can drag that back to the photographs, and you can kind of start seeing there's very little things to do, but it's starting to things that we need to start planning for 5, 10, 15 years down the road. Then down at the bottom gives you your final totals. Here's a blow-up of that chart. You'll see the newer buildings, and I just blew, I didn't do every facility. If you go into the report, you'll see the Parks Operations, a new facility, it's all 1s and the 5s. Obviously, a new building, there should be no deficits in the piece there. Then the bottom gives you the total ranking, and literally, all the categories on the side, you can see the categories from interior, exterior, even a category 31, which is any future growth expansion, things that need to happen for efficiencies. This is just the cutout of the different verbiage that goes with each one, so it's kind of sets you, gives you the history with it, and it pretty much gives you the key gaps and deficiencies and things that need to happen. If they were things that we're shooting for in today, in this year's CIP, a dollar value was kind of allocated for that. That's just following in line with the 21 report, too, to do it. That's where the rest of the facilities, and looking at all the facilities, eventually, you'll need to start looking at what do we need to start spending for on each building and when we do that. The report can help start laying that groundwork and to put those numbers together.
Sorry to interrupt, but as part of that process, was there any consideration about combining facilities for any, so that we have fewer?
No, but I think the next steps would be doing that. I think the next part of this conversation at the table here would be kind of bringing that to the front. And here's your ranking from 1 to 30. As I mentioned, Sawyer Storage Public Safety Training Facility, 100, down to 30. So you can see, when you get down into 15 in here, you're talking facilities that are just between 1 or 2 points. Went over that pretty quickly, but really, high level, and pretty much tell you, we really think, like I said, staff and the city has done a great job with their building, you can tell you care about the buildings. I can tell you, going through with facilities, going to the different buildings, they seem to track a lot of stuff that's going on in these buildings, like I said, whether it's asphalt, HVAC, the electrical, stain on top, and there's always, seems to be always a reason why something's not being done. I'll give you an example. The Public Safety Building over there, they're replacing one of the makeup air units, there's two large makeup air units over there, it's been slotted to be replaced. Well, there's two of them, so digging into it, well, we're not replacing the second one because it feeds the second floor, which is pretty much just used for storage. So literally, everything that we kind of looked into and dug into, staff had a good reason why they were doing what they were doing. So with that, I really just open up the questions to make sure you guys get out of the report what you want to hear and/or want to make sure that there's something that I can help you with to help you understand what the track record is reporting. Before I end, I will tell you, we did these over months period, and scored them over months period, but then we went back when we were all done and scored them all together at the same time, so there was no weight higher than 1, 2 months ago than when we did it 3 days ago. So we then went back and we did them all in the same vein. Thank you.
Well, first, thank you for working on this, thank you for taking up on the project for us and trying to, between city staff and yourself, trying to give us some better, more accurate information to, you know, start making some very important decisions as we move forward. Can you go back one, I think it's one slide, just putting out a question, it's more of a statement. We talk about trying to accomplish things around here, and sometimes it's, we forget what we have accomplished. If you start at the bottom, what we've been able to check off in the last few years is actually pretty remarkable, given, we've got some decent finances, but the resources are not infinite, and to be able to add a Parks Building that I believe was, what, pushing 10-ish probably for cost, 10 million, I think, Transportation Downtown Center, adding on the new storage on Third Avenue for Police, the Parks of Lake Shore Building that we were just in yesterday at 4-ish million, I think it was. We've done some remarkable things, we've been able to check some things off, we're not, we're not leaving these things to chance and to just fall by the wayside, and to your, to your point, appreciate staff's diligence on making sure that these facilities are being maintained, that our folks can work in them, and they can, you know, provide what we need to do. It's not always the best environments, but they're functional and they're safe, and so I just wanted to point that out a little bit. I do have one question, and then I'll kind of open it up a little bit. I noticed the way you reviewed them this year with the scoring, that's really helpful. I mean, I think that's a, that's a good visual for a lot of people to understand. I'm looking at the 21 assessment, I know we did that one more internally a little bit, we didn't provide, or we didn't score it identically, it kind of had just a rank, like 1, 2, 3 to 4, 5. I have, I see 2 things that kind of just jump out at me, the Transportation Main Building and Fire Station 19 jumped up significantly from the 21 assessment, and I was, it was a big jump. The other ones moved around, one are kind of small, small jumps, but those are 2 big jumps. Just for me, without getting too into the weeds, just wondering what drove that reassessment, like, what drove that reprioritization of possibly the need there?
I can go on, my part, I didn't do the 21, but I can tell you, when I went back, a month ago, I can tell you, they weren't in this order.
Okay.
But when I went back and scored them all equally, and kind of re-looked at all the pictures, Transportation did move way up, because if you, if you look at those and rank them with all the other 29, they, it slowly and vastly moved up the list. That building, besides all the things it needs, it's just a massive inefficiency of just space.
I don't disagree at all on that.
Yeah, so on my end, it was, it was literally taking all the conditions of the pieces and seeing how they move up the scale. So you may say, well, City Hall doesn't have, there's other factors that, that interior and efficiencies that score differently, that are different factors than are over there, but help add it up to the total.
That helps me a lot, just in terms of also how you looked at some of the other facilities, so I appreciate you giving me that.
Yep.
What stood out about 19 that rose it up? Fire Station 19? Do you remember?
On the fire stations, they all come together as one. I literally have to see the photos on 19 to look at that one.
I appreciate it.
And like John says, the scores, you can see how tight they are, they're within, in some cases, like 1 or 2 points.
Yeah, you can flip a coin, shuffle them all around, and they're all tied for 5th or 6th.
Yeah.
I appreciate that a lot, thank you.
John, I'll echo a lot of what Matt said, you and I get to talk ahead of time, which is good, too. This was way better than I thought it would be, and it's really refreshing to see that we've taken such good care of the things that we do have and that we've got a lot of new ones. So DJ, to your point, this presents a unique opportunity going forward, I think, for me as well, because there are, we have a lot of runway. I mean, if we keep taking care of the things that we have and the way that we are, we have runway to get creative and to think about what happens next in a different manner than just which thing needs to replace in which order, which is how this has always been done. But we've done such a good job, and most of these are, I'm not going to put you on the spot and tell us how long these things last, but these are 10, 15, 20, 30 years if we keep taking care of stuff, that we're in a pretty good position at this point, for most of these, because we're pretty far ahead.
Yeah, if you look at the columns and there are 2s and 3s, your 5, 10, 15, that you even have to address.
So what a unique spot to be in, where we aren't forced with pressing issues, at least not very many of them, but then we can look at other creative ways to do the things that make this better 100 years from now instead, which is great. So I really appreciate it, it was fun to read, I liked the pictures, I'm not going to bore you with my silly questions I was asking you ahead of time, those are not important, I get it.
Yeah, and I can tell you, if you look at some of the pictures, you know, it's miscellaneous tuck pointing, though those are, in my mind, when you're talking large, very small-scale dollar values.
And we do them on an ongoing basis anyway, right? None of these pictures are to say that these things aren't being addressed all the time, and we don't wait for your study to address these things. These things get fixed, because we've got a killer facilities team that does this all the time. So I just think it's great that this turned out as well as it did, so thank you.
Yeah, 100%, I'll just give you some examples, like the museum, they just finished a whole round of tuck pointing windows, well, then there's, the next phase is the roof and things that they're doing. I commented on the library, I was amazed on how well the caulking is on the addition phase, well, then John noted, the building went through a major, so there's stories, like I said, behind it all, but it was good to be able to talk to staff to figure out, is that original, or did, you know, when was it done?
Ditto on that, I mean, it goes to show how much money you can save, and how much money the taxpayers are going to hold on to, and we can reallocate if we're proactive instead of reactive with our facilities maintenance. I've seen scenarios where a local government has not been particularly proactive and is about $100 million to hold, and it can get extremely exaggerated and excruciatingly annoying. Couple of questions for me that I have, Transportation, I've been through there, it's an old incinerator, that's what it was designed for, shut down 2 years after it opened. I would like to take the opportunity, when that building is up for replacement, which seems fairly soon, to try to more creatively utilize the space, and I think that would be a good point for consolidation. There's a, there's a lot of space up there, the problem is, it's vertical and it's not necessarily usable for, for taking a large bus and moving it up, you can't really do that. So that, for me, when we talk about consolidation, I think that location would be a good spot to take a look at with the amount of land that it sits on. I know that we do a lot of storage out there for a lot of our traffic materials and whatnot, but if there's an option, I think that is, that is one. City Hall's another big one, but I think that's an entirely separate conversation, and then, as well as, I know we talked about Sawyer and the Joint Training Facility last budgeting, but for me, I think really the next system where we can start consolidation begins at Transportation. That's just my 2 cents on it.
Yeah, and if you haven't seen the Edberg Anderson study that they did over there last year or the year before, it's worth looking at, because it's a very in-depth study on that facility.
On Transportation?
Yeah, yeah.
If that wasn't shared out, maybe?
We're collecting all the facilities.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Studies.
It's also good timing of you coming up to have them all in a electronic rolodex, I'll reference the 1980s there.
So Jacob, I'm glad you said City Hall, because when I was going through this last night, that was one of the things that jumped out to me, is how high it scored in a bad way. You know, we've been talking about it for a while, about, does it meet our needs, is it efficiently laid out, and what can be done, but also knowing that the facility itself is, the scoring like this, it does, you know, puts some impotence behind it as well.
What, John, what would be the next step if we were going to look at next steps? I mean, how can we leverage this report and other governments' reports to figure out how we can best use our tax dollars? And what I mean there, I know the county has recently done a facility study, we have a ton of county property in the city that is here tax-free, to the extent that we can consolidate not just our buildings, but their buildings into our buildings, how would we go about looking at that, considering that, and leveraging this report and their report to do that?
I'll start by the piece I, you know, I would say, keep doing what you've been doing, working with staff and bringing that, because, you know, these bottom new buildings are, were done that way, so you roadmap them the correct way. How you start intertwining other agencies, I think I would leave that to others higher than me.
I guess, does your firm have experience giving recommendations for that, or would we use someone else for that?
Yeah, for like, the master plan, like how to, which buildings to implement?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, if I can interject.
Please, always.
I think one of the things, I've been having conversations with the county executive and their facilities team, and our facilities team, to talk, to talk about these opportunities, so, but one of the other things that I think you mentioned before is just looking at how, also how we operate, and how we can operate differently going forward, so that, that'll probably be a little more in-depth discussions, but we'll probably, we'll be asking for some funding to look into, some more studies to do things the right way, because it's going to be a significant ask for the taxpayers, so we want to make sure we do it well.
Council, a little more questions? Go.
Do you, do y'all consider EUI or energy budget or utility budget of the different facilities? I know sometimes I've seen, just like in looking at recently constructed buildings or recently major, majorly renovated buildings within the UW system, they look good on paper, kind of as designed, and then we start to find that they're a little more energy consumptive, and while I definitely agree with and would support the idea of finding ways to share space and consolidate buildings, I'm just curious if you take that into account as you're making recommendations.
Yeah, so we, we didn't do it here, because it was a different type, but we do like payback analysis, when it's energy efficiency, employee efficiencies, and you kind of put those together and paybacks to see where it makes sense to, you know, where you go with next steps with different facilities that people operate out of.
Sure can give you some more insight into utilities and opportunities there.
Okay, so we are in the process of completing a, kind of a SUN study, to see about the feasibility of solar on city-owned structures here within the city of Oshkosh. It's a grant-paid study, which is nice, and they're, they had just done a very brief first draft run-through with some of us at the staff, here at the city level, of very cursory first look, where they feel there might be an option to look into solar to offset some of those utility costs. And Mike can maybe talk a little bit more about the fact that we know some of the structures in the city have been built since to have the capability on the roof, but we don't have that data fully from them yet, and the next step for them is to look into it a little bit deeper to give us that analysis, so that we can find out what cost savings there could be, while of course, there's going to be an upfront installation costs, and then potentially what credits or funding we can receive from state and federal government.
And part of that study, they did go through our current utility costs, so.
Yes.
With having the ROA, I, so bringing this together with that, I think will help.
Right, it's just another piece of the puzzle.
Yeah. So I know the 2 facilities, the operations facility and last parks facility that we were involved with is, are both solar ready.
Well, I don't think you're necessarily looking for direction coming out of this workshop, and generally, this is, usually comes back to us for, at a future council meeting for some follow-up. Is there other questions council may have on anything related to facilities for now?
I just want to thank you for being thorough on this. This was, you know, as to another member's point, this was great to read, very enjoyable to look through. And overall, I think it gives us an accurate picture, and a better picture than I was anticipating. So I am pleasantly surprised, and when we look at the investment that we've put in over the past few years, you know, taking a step back and looking at it, I think we've come very far and done a good job, so more to come.
In terms of, I know, just so I guess one more comment, generally make this comment during our budget process, but something I know that, between Fitz and John, some of that they worked with Mark in previous years on, was, it used to be not that long ago where council chose the winners and losers, even when it came to the roofs, the HVAC units, as to which ones were a priority, and I'm going to be really nice to all of some of us, we have no basis for making that decision. Train, you know, probably trained staff has that, and they know what is the most highest priority in our, in our inventory. I know some of the discussions not that long ago, maybe a year or so, 2 years ago, between this, the 21 study and now, is some of the direction that was being talked about, and I think it was given, was, once we start allocating set dollars, that kind of a similar program be created for our facilities, that, you know, once we're prepared to commit to certain dollars per year, that we then put that into a bucket that the facilities team manages based upon the highest and best use of those dollars, that they're ranking those priorities, that we're not then, well, you know, then also, I just, I create a posse and, well, I want Fire Station 16 better, because that's in my neighborhood. Just something to think about as we go forward, I think some of the asks in the future may be of more dollar amounts, and let them choose based upon the needs of the community, is something to consider that past councils have talked about, and I imagine we will too in the future.
Yep.
I agree with that. I think, though, to the extent that we can have ideas about how to leverage combining facilities, consolidating with county, I think, I agree with you, let's not pick a roof, let's decide that we're going to combine our police department, the sheriff department, for example.
Then we're, I think bigger is that we're giving direction and prepared to back up that direction, to, to, we're back into city staff to say, you know, this is the direction we want to go, and now, you know, here's the money to execute that.
Same, same thoughts, Mr. Mayor, to a degree, and DJ again, this, framing the CIP in a manner that, no, we have this information, makes that process look different, in a much better way than it did previously, because all we heard, lots of doom and gloom, and yes, fighting for which thing, which fire station has the ice falling on it. We all know the answer to that question, because it came up every 3rd day, every day we were here. I'd be very thankful not to hear that anymore, and instead to have reasoned, no, no offense, but reasoned conversations based on data of a study that we put together that allows us to get creative with what we can do in the future, and yes, that might mean just saying, fix the things and keep doing it great, and let us think about how to do it better in the long term, is fantastic. I mean, this is all very positive.
But for us, I think part of our job is making sure that we can figure out that long-term vision, and then let staff execute it, that's the division of power that we have here in the city. And so, you know, for me, I don't want to squabble over roofs, I want to figure out the best, you know, the best plan of action going forward. I think we have more on our plate than to squabble over, you know, HVAC units and whatnot, and I think everybody here is in agreement on that, but I do think we should be thinking about where we can leverage our existing space, where can we partner with the county and whatnot, so.
So you were listening to Mike Ford yesterday.
I think staff really appreciates that, and I appreciate this dialogue, I think that, you know, we, follows a similar model that we have with roofing and HVAC, where we had a set aside amount of money, and then when we move to consolidating facilities, I mean, it's obviously going to be a bigger amount of money, but I think it depoliticizes that process for staff, and the facilities that need the most help are going to get it, and it, you know, it eliminates a lot of, you know, lobbying and all kinds of other things that may not prioritize the greatest needs, so it's good to hear all of you talk about it in that way.
Rebecca, any more, anything from us that you think your staff needs? Rebecca, any more, anything from us that you think your staff needs?
No, I think, I think you'll be seeing some of the information through the capital process as we move forward, and we'll just keep you apprised of the discussions we're having with the other entities.
Fantastic. All right. If there's nothing else, we can close the workshop and get ready for our council. I mean, thank you again for the work.
Great, thank you.